I think so. Okay, alright. Next call meeting is ordered at seven thirty. Let's, let's.
Let's begin this to the wire for the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Supervisor Penny Turner?
Here.
Court Kimberly Sharp, that's myself, I'm here. Attorney Lisa Moore?
I'm here.
Justice Daryl Nichols?
Here.
Justice Michael Pecato?
Here.
Approval of the agenda. I have one. Deletion under supervisors appointments. We took off the Mylan Air Fire Department. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, when I add, um, um, to the tablet and internet, um, inter- uh.
Speaker system?
Yeah, speaker system, PA system.
Do you wanna add it separate or add it all together?
It's just gonna be discussion.
There are nine. Make it under eight, add it to tablet, internet, and speakers. Anybody else? I'll make sure that what I ask for. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I don't know, there is one, oh, nobody gets there, it's under half.
I wanna make sure they're all together. Second?
Second.
By Turner, second by Nichols, to approve as amended, or in favor?
Uh.
Opposed? Or she cares? First citizen's time. Right.
First thing I got is, uh, the dust control, whatever that pond's going at.
Have you called Mike at all about it, or?
We don't return calls. Nothing is getting done there, nothing.
So he's not returning your calls?
And I want that I-beam. You put an I-beam, Ed put an I-beam over there, Mike, red tag. Stayed in there for a week and a half. Ed tore it out, then he put another one in there. Is this is the kinda shit you guys wanted this township for Ed to play games like that? I'm not the one to play with it.
So it was red tagged and then?
Ed, Ed moved it three, about a week and a half later, Ed moved it, then he stuffed, he put another one in there. This is all so I can't get my combi now. Roger and Ed stood outside this door in the last planning commission meeting, not this la- last week, last month. They told him, Roger, they were gonna put a stake in there, so I didn't get my combi now. I think that's bullshit. Ed don't have a permit to put a be- beam in, he has a permit to put a berm in.
What you say beam, are you?
He put a I-beam in the ground, thirty feet in the air, I got pictures of it. I'm tired of Ed's games, you guys are letting him get away with this shit. What about my house? You know, all this dust?
I get the dust, I get the dust.
He needs the water shit.
Um, what you need to do then, on days that it is bad?
We got more pictures than we know what to do with. It's just, it's an ongoing thing, you guys are worried about Ed suing you, what about us suing you?
How about call me or text me?
I did call you, and you told me to call Mike, and you don't call me back.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. And I asked him in the meeting, in the planning commission meeting, he just kinda looks at me like, whoa.
Do, can you show me on your phone where you've called him?
Yep. After the meeting, I'll show you.
Or send it to me?
Yep. And also, what's this? Four ponds signed off by Ron Youngblood and Lisa Moore, what's this deal? The ponds ain't done.
Lisa Moore don't have the authority to sign off.
She signed off on it, her name's on it.
Do you mean for the, the reimbursement for the?
His pond and three other ponds got signed off by Ron Youngblood and Lisa Moore.
Please, correct me if I'm wrong, when Ron signs it off, he sends it to you saying he signed off, and then that's with you sign off?
I've seen.
Now this township ain't responsible for his pond to get finished, or for Cindy DePereaux's?
I've drove around, I've seen about eight, he started, they're not finished.
So yours isn't finished?
None of them.
Neither is Cindy, Cindy's got a big ditch going through her pond.
There's about eight right now that I know of, that I can take you and show you.
That's what I tried to tell the planning commission, nothing is getting done.
He's been coming over to my house, I opened that gate for him. Probably twenty times, he's still never went over there, he told me, oh, I'll be over tomorrow. Well, I had business, I had, all kinds of.
None of these ponds are getting done.
I cannot answer for Ron, but I can tell you this. Since I've took office, the ponds are not gonna be signed off unless everything is done and we've got.
He did it while he worked under you, that's when it got signed.
Why I didn't know about that, but I'm saying that since I.
So you're now accountable for it because he worked for you when he got signed off, and you signed it too.
Well, that I didn't know about, but my thing is now, it says no ordinance to reclamation. To me, reclamation means the pond is built.
Well, he keeps getting them permits, and then that's another year.
How's he?
You gotta, somebody gives him permits.
Well, alright.
Who's giving him a permit?
If he's, if he's following the ordinance, he can get the permits.
No, it's the guy that's giving him them permits is the one you gotta get on.
You're talking about our zoning?
Before he finishes, yes.
See, and the only recourse I think we might.
I know eight right now it's not finished, I can take you and show you.
The only recourse I think we may have, if, if we wanna start getting stricter, is to change our ordinance.
Well, there we go, let's get with it.
Take it back, I mean, I know it was just changed.
And he's over there digging, I wanted to make mine bigger. You guys wouldn't, ah, two and a half acres, all you can do, you gotta stay hundred foot away from somebody's property line. He's digging right up to their property line, hauling out topsoil, I've seen it. Now, I'm pissed off over this. You need to get rid of one, it's kissing his ass. And if you're taping it, that's alright, let the world know.
They, they need to know.
There's somebody in this department, I worked at Ford's, I know, we had suck at them. There's somebody in this department that's doing it for you.
Well, I, unfortunately, this.
On this panel.
Doesn't authorize.
I'm telling you, I know.
You know, it's through the planning permission and through the zoning.
Well, there's somebody in there then.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, because I told Alan and Sean both, and this gentleman in the back, he came, and they, they, they have come for months, and they complained to the planning commission.
Yep.
And this is what I said, and you guys can tell me if I'm bullshit or not, I said, you know, if somebody hits the requirements, and they've got a project, they bring it to the planning commission, the zoning administrator says, okay, you've checked all the boxes, go to the planning commission, they come to the planning commission, the planning commission says to the zoning administrator, has he met all the requirements? Because we don't see everything that an individual turns in.
Well, you should have somebody to go out there.
Hang on, hang on, Larry. So, we don't see everything that they, he turns in, not all the time. So when the zoning administrator says, yeah, he's hit all the, he's checked all the boxes. So when the planning commission okay's that, then, uh, that zoning administrator now is empowered to red tag it, he's empowered to, uh, contact legal, he, he has the ability to shut it down, to make an individual, uh, uh, conform to the ordinance, and, uh.
If you've done violation of the ordinance, then you can't do anything, it's not actionable?
Last Monday, when, uh, you asked that question to him, Mike said, nope, I checked the ordinance, he's within his legal.
I got the red tag because I'm the poor.
I understand that, but I mean, didn't he say that last Monday?
Yes, he did.
He, he said that I checked with the ordinance, he also said, I consulted with legal counsel, and the attorney said, you know, that he can do that, is that what he said?
That's what he said, something like that, but what's a red tag mean? Stop, work, and it's removed. And it didn't get done.
That's, that's the report that Mike gave us.
And it's not the red report.
Go out there and look, there's stockpiling and, 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 uh, violations all over the place.
You were, you were there on Monday, what did Mike say?
He's either being handcuffed or he's not doing his job.
Well, you go, you go over Petersburg and look where they doing those things. It's beautiful.
What I will do is, I'll make it a point Thursday.
It is beautiful.
To go out there and look myself. And I will make it a point.
I think so.
There's at least twenty people, and they're having their lives grabbed every single day. It's gonna go on for a decade for the benefit of one person.
Alright, listen.
You're making a bunch of us suffer, you don't care about the residents?
Excuse me, sir, that's, that's untrue statement, you're making statements that is not true. Now, I will go out there, and I will take a look. If you can send me, showing me that you've called him and he's not returned your calls, then I will, I will address that with him. And if, if he's not doing his job, then this board needs to do something different. But if, as long as Ed's following the ordinance and doing what he's supposed to do, there's, I mean, now, this nitpicking stuff, it's gotta stop, you know?
I'm not doing it.
I'm, I'm just saying, I know how he can be.
He's mad because I quit working for him, that's, that's what he's mad about.
And I know how he can be, but.
That's wrong, you don't treat the residents that you're digging in a pond in my backyard. I gotta live over there, I got two neighbors.
But I'm days that, if you send me something saying that he's, I'm calling.
That ain't gonna do no good, he laughs at you, he laughs at everybody, he, the more you, the more you pick on him, I know how he is, I known, I known Ed all my way.
He gets awful.
The more to pick on, the more to say to him, the more he does, he aggravates you. For Christ's sake, he just called Bill Eady on me the other day because I was going over to work the field down. Bill come up, Bill come out there and said, what are you doing? I said, I'm working the corn stocks down, the planting next year. Well, why don't you wait till he's done on it? I'm like, you shit me man, five dollar gallon field?
I know he, he's upset with me because I won't sign off until it's completely done now.
I think Kabisky needs to go look at his pond, go look at Cindy's, I think Kabisky needs to get involved on this.
Cindy's is bad.
I just wanna correct, I just wanna try to sign off because I go by one, they tell me, so I can give him back his money.
Oh, wow.
I did not verify.
I'm just saying, your signature was on it.
I know, but I don't walk out there to check, that's not my part of the, I just wanna clarify that, I did not okay.
That's why I wanted to bring it to Penny's attention because your name was on it, that's why I wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
For the check.
But that's for the check.
You're not allowed to, no, you were signing off on it.
But you understand, that zoning administrator okayed that.
Right, and that's why I got.
That's the one that okayed that, that's what, that's, that's what I'm trying to tell you guys.
He was working for the township.
That individual has the ability to shut shit down. He can stop the progress on stuff, if an ordinance is not being followed, he has the ability, whatever course of action he needs to take, he can take that course of action.
No, I'm talking about, is, so Ron had the.
You fill all money on hundreds, no.
Apparently. Did, uh, Mike get ahold of you guys to set up a meeting with myself and the three of you?
Nope.
And Mike, alright, I'll make sure that gets done.
There's a few others that wanted to sit down with you too, we leave Ron there.
That way we can discuss it when I want.
That would be, that would be awful, appreciate it.
Yeah, we don't have to do that.
Thank you, thank you. That would get us somewhere.
I wanna say one thing, the only thing that everybody could do to stop some of these ponds not getting done, is in the ordinance, is you can only have so many ponds unfinished before you can apply for the next one. That's the only fair thing that.
But here's, here's.
I understand.
Here's how that works, Carl.
I know.
It, it's the homeowner that's applying to get these ponds dug. The homeowners apply to get these ponds dug, it's not that an individual.
We discussed it before, but I was just letting everybody else know some of your.
A, a homeowner is the, is the one requesting that, they're the ones that come into the planning commission, do they not? You guys have all been there, the homeowners come in and apply for that stuff.
And they're no. And they're the property hostage.
You know, it's not technically for humans, they own the pond, he's just doing the work. Alright, we're gonna end it right here, I will make a meeting, if anybody else wants to join, go ahead, Mr. Kim.
Well, I have a couple things about what he's saying about, uh, dust and all that, and there, but I have a couple other things too. Uh, the dust, and that, according to this, uh, and your general requirements and your thing, uh, he's gotta do something about the dust, and that's not even through you, but that's through Michigan Department of Environmental and Quality. Now, he's got a big old dirt pile sitting right next to my lot line, right by my house, just as tall as my house.
You're talking about the berm?
That's not a berm, it's stockpiled dirt just sitting there, now, and your requirements right there, what's he doing about the dust? I mean, my house is filthy, everything is dusty, dirty, and everything else, okay? Two, uh, he's putting in a bunch of, uh, garbage, cement, and all that, it's supposed to be for his road, alright? But according to your general requirements, the fill of a land with rubbish or garbage, painted or coated concrete, concrete blocks, bricks, and et cetera, construction and demolition waste, you can't do it.
Now, he, he can put concrete as long as it's not painted.
No, not according to your regulations.
Well, according to the state, Ken, because I call and I ask because I'm.
I'm talking about your thing right here, and it's, uh, zoning district with, uh, the permits and all that, and for him to get to do that, he's gotta have, uh, residents, landowners, within a half mile of where he's doing this, written permission from them to put this stuff in.
What are you reading from?
You heard, this is your paperwork.
What ordinance is it?
It's A, general requirements, section, uh, five point six oh eight, filling operations. So, with all that cement there, and then he can't have any of that stuff buried within a hundred feet of a lot line. He's got that cement sixty-five feet from my lot line. I didn't give him written permission to use any of that stuff.
Alright, bring all that with you in our meeting.
And then, like I said too, with, uh, dust control and all that, I mean, like I said, my house is a frickin' mess. Who's paying to get it cleaned?
I guess you can sue him to get it cleaned, I guess.
Uh, well, according to what Mike's telling me, that you guys give him permission to do whatever, put the berms up, whenever he felt like it, because he generously suggested letting him do it.
Well, I know at the public hearing, that, that was one of the requests from the residents that he put a berm.
Then I don't even have a berm on the south side of my property. I got all this dirt and everything else flowing around.
You know, you know he won't give me a berm because he said I'm mean.
And then.
Is that good enough for the township really?
I signed the paper with Ed to have a berm, that's what it started, and everybody else wanted it, Ed threw that in there. He's supposed to have gates at the road, he's supposed to have signs out there, none of that stuff's done yet. You know, we're all paying attention, we all listen to these meetings.
I told you, I sit here at everyone's meetings and I take notes, I'd listen, hey, none of this stuff getting done, why is that getting away with this?
See, and that's.
I'm not doing this because I don't work for him, I'm doing this to protect my kids, my own.
See, that's, that's the zoning person's job, he's supposed to see.
Well, that's the harder one that's gonna do something.
And then maybe or not, I mean, we gotta do something, I can't continue with all these complaints.
He's not even cleaning the roads, now, I called Monroe.
Road Commission?
Commission on him, but in your ordinance, in three different places, requirements and general, he's supposed to clean that. Now, I don't care if Ed's out there with a push broom and a dust pad, he needs to be cleaning these roads. I, I mean, it's a mess out there.
And you laugh about the comment where he said he was mean, that was the, that was the meaning, Penny, where you asked him, if in the na- in the, in the name of basic decency, he'd give me a berm, and he said, no, 'cause I'm mean. And apparently, that's acceptable to you guys, then you can do that to a resident, 'cause I'm so mean.
There's nothing in that ordinance that says anything about berms.
Yeah, because you made it voluntary after it was mandatory.
But two, I talked to the, uh, Drake Commission, Ed was wanting to do, he dug a hundred foot from my line out, and he was supposed to bring in clay and all that for drainage, I talked to Drake Commission, and they said, there's no need for any clay to be put in, because they're set back far enough. All the berms were supposed to be set back a hundred feet from any lot line. So, he's talking about bringing that stuff in, and again, the stuff that he brought in, especially over on Oke Road, it's got bricks and all that, and again, that's against your ordinance. And if he's dumping that garbage, he needs written permission from anybody within a half a mile of everything he's dumping.
Alright, I'm looking into that, you said five point six oh eight?
Yep. And it's, uh, A, general requirements, and it's the first one, says it flat out.
I got one more, Penny. Hey, what's, uh, what's the ordinance where you guys can take away the planning commission on voting on stuff? I think we need to bring it back to the board, where you guys vote.
You talking about Article twelve?
Yes, we voted for you guys to be elected in this township, I think you guys need to have the last vote, not the planning commission.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's under Article twelve.
Thank you.
Did we pass that during Gary?
I'll say.
No, we didn't pass it during Gary.
He tried to pass it and didn't go through.
No, the, uh, Monroe County, uh, planning commission said you need to, uh, take another look at that.
So, the one that's on the books now is the old version, not the new version?
There is no new version.
Well, it's the old version.
That's it, yeah, that's the only one.
And that was the checks and balances, is what that is.
I'll have to go read it again, it's been a while.
Thank you, Penny.
Yeah, anything, uh, and like I said, I'll get you guys in the meeting.
How's he getting away with digging so many when he's only supposed to be using twenty percent of his property?
That's extraction.
Okay, on that note, if you look at his plans, one big pond says extraction, the other one says extraction, but where the berms are, it doesn't say no extraction on that, so how's he digging along everybody's property line?
Like I said, we'll get a meeting together and we'll, we'll try to work through these, and, and that way I am aware what's, your complaints are, what's going on, apparently I'm not in the loop on this, and I will make sure that I get in the loop, whatever.
I wanted to get closer to the property line, he said, Ed said, we gotta stay a hundred feet away from a property line.
We do.
We can't dig over there.
Well, how's he?
I said I wanted, I wanted to dug out. You know, so I wasn't have to mow it.
Are you ready, else?
Hundred feet, he said, and he's digging right up to their property line, I went over and looked. And there's all kinds of junk they're hauling in there.
Yeah, I'm gonna go take a look. Anybody else?
They're covering it up, quick as they dunk it. You ain't gonna see it.
So how are we gonna address some of these issues?
I'm gonna have a meeting, the, whoever, I didn't, I, you wanna be in it?
Yes, please.
Actually, I think everybody along Plank Road should be in on that.
Whoever you want, I can't, Mike, and whoever, I know that you three were the main ones that I've gotten calls though. I haven't gotten any, anybody else on Plank Road.
Because everybody knows that dealing with that shit, just nothing happens.
Well.
Well, that zoning administrator is supposed to be doing that shit, that's what he's empowered to do.
Or a new one.
You know?
It'll do the job.
That's his job to do that, and then report back to the board, and as you go through, I mean, you guys have sat in meeting after meeting, where he'll have a report in here, what he's done, you know, this is what I worked on, and that, and that, and that.
Not to keep going, but when I seen that red tag, I took a picture of it, and it's standing on there for a week and a half, and Ed walked over there, tore it off, and threw it in the field, and it blew in his woods, because we got a camera right there, we watched every minute of it.
Did you call Mike to tell him that he took it down?
Yes, I did, and he didn't do anything about it, he says, well, according to the ordinance, he's got thirty days, so he puts another one in there. So what's he got, another thirty, it's still in there, I'll tell you what, if it's in there at Christmas time, I'm gonna push it over with my tractor. That's what's gonna happen.
I'll, I'll get with you guys and get a meeting.
We're not dealing with this, we gotta live there, my kids gotta play there.
He dug right up to that guy's road.
Alright, we're, alright, we're gonna, we're, I've, I've heard it all.
We're gonna have a meeting.
We're gonna have a meeting, I'm not gonna continue to take up time.
You put a stop to it till he finishes up, don't give him no permits. I want mine done.
Alright, you need to come in and talk to Mike, let it know that it's not done, uh, apparently if Ron signed off, I don't know, I don't know.
Did Ron sign off?
Home was rolled down.
Yes, yep.
The lady comes up there and looked at.
He signed off on his, Cindy's, and two.
Mine signed off, then.
I held on to him for a while, and I finally let him go because it's like, no, he could tell me they were not done.
Ron is opening up for lawsuits.
Her name's on it, I think. I think her name's on it.
I know we're at lawsuits.
Okay.
I'll have to sign off, I'm just gonna check back.
So, are you gonna go out there and look at the site?
Yeah, I will be out there Thursday. I'll be in the, well, I've got a meeting Thursday morning, but it'll be after that meeting, I'll drive out there. And if you don't care, I'll go through.
Then you come right through my driveway, go right back to Sean, Sean will let you.
Alright.
You can drive him up and look and see what he's did over by my house too, if you want.
I'm in a blue Jeep, so don't shoot me.
Nope. Oh, we'll see you before you come.
Alright.
Don't wear antlers.
Alright, moving on.
You're light.
Oh, thank you again, Penny.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Moving on, approval of the November fourteen twenty-two minutes, I looked them over, I have no additions or deletions.
You have the break copy, you got the ones with the page numbers on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was, she forwarded the ones that I edited and then has sent it out to everybody and it's in the wrong copy, so I caught that today, so. I just wanna make sure it was the one with page numbers because it's only five pages and stuff. I got that.
Seeing as no, um. Seeing as there are no changes, I'll make a motion to approve the November fourteen twenty-two minutes. Move by Turner, second by Nichols, all in favor?
Yeah.
Both? Supervisors report. Um, don't, sir, sir. Sorry about. Um, I attended the Mylan Air Fire Department meeting, and they had to be rescheduled to November due to a lack of quorum, so we had to do it this month, um, for the compensation committee, I still only have one applicant, and we need five, so that will be on next month's agenda, and that's all I have.
Make a motion to accept the supervisor's report, sorry. Morton?
Second.
Move by Kinkowski, second by Nichols, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or she cares?
Treasurer's report.
Okay. Okay, so the, uh, tax account, the balance on there is forty-six thousand, hundred forty-nine thirty-four, and the general fund, we have seven hundred eighty-six thousand, four hundred ninety-eight and forty cents. In our road fund, we have thirty-two thousand, a hundred forty, fourteen. In our fire, we have two hundred twelve thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents. And our sewer, our balance is two thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-four cents. Our surveys really haven't changed much, um, ninety-one thousand, four seventy-eight fifty-nine, sixty-one thousand, nine forty-eight twenty-three, and then the third one is five thousand, sixty-eighty-five oh two. And as of December sixth, all the taxes were out, so if you haven't not got a tax, you might may want to see me, but they were all mailed out. And that's all I have.
Make the motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Second it, move by Turner's, s- move by Sharp, second by Turner, accept treasurer's report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or she cares?
Let's report. Um, more informational than anything else in your packets, because Penny had asked me about billing out the fire department services, and I have, um, an invoice in here, a, a sample, it's free, um, so, take a look at it, tell me what you think, free is free. I use the same thing in my bookkeeping business, I send out my invoices, you can accept meetings this way.
And I just wanna clarify what this is for, as for, say if there's an accident and the person doesn't live in our township, I don't think it's fair that our residents pay for that fire service, I think I should bail those people. Same with Edison, if they got down wires, Edison should get that bill, but she can ask the taxpayers to pay that. That's what I'm trying to say.
No, that's, that's all the invoices for, so I'm just giving you guys a sample, let, give me some feedback, let me know. Um, Penny had mentioned wanting to start it in January, so we got a little bit of time to think about it.
You don't have that N B S nine to do invoices?
I don't know that we have that module, um.
Okay.
I don't do too much with the treasurer's sign of it, I see mostly accounts payable, I mostly know that we have the accounts receivable module, that we send out the invoices.
I'm not looking at.
If you wanna look into it, that's fine, because I know.
Those are the V C, but this is free though.
Yeah, whatever, okay, this way for you?
The money just, if you accept paying. The money just, if you accept payments online, um, where they can just put their credit card information in and just pay, it drops right into your checking account. And there's a notification that comes from this service and says, you got paid, so you know exactly what's going on. It makes it so easy. And free is so great.
Uh, when you send these out, Kim, are you going to attach the fire bill that we got with this?
They can be sent as an attachment, um, but I don't know that you can attach it to this, I'd have to try it. And again, it's a free service, so the invoice, uh, collecting all the money, there's, there's a bank fee, um, people pay electronically. If they come in with a check, it's all yours.
I don't wanna say electronically though. Hmm? And I, I don't wanna do it electronically.
And you don't have to, you can just print these out and mail them.
Okay.
So.
But it would be more detailed than some just fire services, something like a day, you know, like a day notes.
Yeah, that's, I just created an item, and that's the item's name, and that's the description I put in there, because I didn't have, you know, John Q Tester. Um, that wonderful resident who lives on Nowhere Street in Mylan, um, that's, he, he had a imaginary fire alarm.
For ten dollars?
Yeah. Just to give you, you know, hands up, that, because you had asked about it. Um, we also have a box for toys for tots in the township hall. It will be picked up Friday. Um, there are toys in it, but I would like to actually, you know, see if we could get more toys in there. Um, as a business owner, for Halloween, I had a contest that nobody took me up on, you know, a hundred dollars for the best costume for your, you know, pools and goblins. So, I took that hundred dollars and I put it in for Toys for Tots, and they had a really good sale at Myers, so I put about a hundred and sixty dollars worth of toys in there. So, it's Christmas time, toys are on sale, please help these children. And that's my report.
I'll make a. I'll make a motion to approve the clerk's report?
I'll second.
Move by Turner, second by Moore, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Go leave the park, report. Looks like we had a total of thirty-three inspections and eleven permits pulled. I don't think it's cut off, sorry.
Yeah, I can't see either.
So, all of guys, thirty-three inspections and eleven permits.
They usually print it online, they probably.
Yeah.
I think that's it, right?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept the zoning department report?
Move by Sharp, second by Pinkowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Assessor's report. Continue to work in the twenty-twenty-three role. Fieldwork is being done. December Board of U will meet tomorrow, Tuesday, twelve thirteen at five P M. I'll make a motion to approve the assessor's report. Move by Turner, second by Sharp, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. C A reports. From November twenty-two.
There's two in there?
There's two.
Yeah, one in, oh, because I wasn't reading last one, that's why.
Some general statistics. As of this report, I have worked on four hundred and fifty-two separate zoning ordinance and other issue activities, including twenty-six abandoned, neglected properties and forty light investigations. Seventeen new address requests, forty-two split reviews, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and two permit inquiries, plan reviews, a hundred and twenty-eight land use inquiries, fourteen occupancy, eight solar and three flooding issues. Three hundred and forty-five of the above have either been resolved or otherwise addressed pending further developments as of this time. Zoning activities, reviewed and consulted on accessory dwellings, property line, pond, fence, barn, land vision, property values, rezoning, livestock, utility access, solar, wastewater management and other uses and plants. Enforcement activities, complaints and actions. Unpermitted pond on Grant's Road. Received contact from owner, reviewed zoning and permitting requirements, provided applications for same. Working with M C D C to ensure properly designed compliant pond, suspended attorney referral pending full owner compliance. Blighted property improper use, plank road. Submitted to and working with township attorney on same due to failure to achieve and or maintain compliance. Inoperable, inoperable vehicles stored on Grant's Road. Submitted to and working with attorney due to lack of progress on resolving non-compliant issues. Extraction complaints on Oak Road. Have reviewed residents' complaints with M C D C, Angold Township engineer and attorney. Continue to monitor and respond and nothing more actionable as of this date. Site plan deviation complaint, extraction of Oak Road. Found drainage plan changes approved by Monroe County Drain Commission. Also spoke with Angold Supervisor, found no further document submissions prior to as of this report. Pumping equipment during non-construction hours, extraction of Oak Road. Contract to claim more hours needed to manage site water. Negotiated with end parties, agreed to ten P M shut-off compromise. Occupancy violation, light darting mode. Met with owner reviewed and advised on preliminary site plan. Owner continued progress on cleaning up property. Continue to work with, bringing into compliance. Occupancy violation, want to boat. Met with owners toward an inspected out, found all apparent habitation and ceased spacious under conversion to compliant uses. Will continue to monitor. Light complaint mayor road. No response yet, said written warning, continue to monitor. Light complaint weeds maintenance day road. Investigated issued courtesy notice to, issued courtesy notice, continue to monitor. Light complaint inoperable vehicles to reuse day road. Investigated said courtesy notice, continue to monitor. Light complaint inoperable vehicles to reuse surfway. Investigated said courtesy, courtesy notice, continue to monitor. Thank you, Mike, and Paula.
Make a motion to accept the, um, zoning administrator's report?
I'll second it. Move by Sharp, second by Turner, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Plank commissioner report?
Um, well, the planning commission, uh, worked on solar. Well, it's hard to believe, but uh, we certainly worked on solar again, um, following up with Kavinsky's, uh, suggestions and, uh, that's the route that we took. Um, we, uh, we certainly seemed like we were making some progress on things. The, the planning commission has a couple of, uh, uh, things they asked me to bring to the board. One being, uh, twenty percent of land mass, because that's what the board sent me back there with. Commercial property, twenty percent of that could go into solar. Of that, whatever size property the individual had, would have to be commercial, and twenty percent of the land mass could be used for solar. So, what the planning commission asked me, uh, was to find out from our attorney if that seemed to be excessive and could end the township up in court over that, um, the twenty percent land mass. I told them that, you know, that's what it is for ponds, it's twenty percent land mass. And, um, they wanted me to bring that to the board. So, if we could find out from township attorney if that's excessive, I would appreciate it. The, uh, planning commission would appreciate it.
So, you want me to ask her if twenty percent is commercial, if she feels that would be excessive request?
Yeah.
So, what you're saying is that anybody who wanted to put the solar arrays on their farmland, if they're N A G, they could take twenty percent of their land mass?
They're not.
And rezone to commercial?
They're not, they're not in ag, it's gotta be commercial.
We only have this much commercial, so.
Yeah.
And I think it's already got mass on it. I don't know if it's got stuff on it, so.
Well, that's what I was, that's what I was tasked with to take back to the planning commission. Commercial property and twenty percent of land mass within that commercial property. That's what the board sent me back to the planning commission with. So, that's what I done. I delivered that message. Um.
Now, should I get a hold of the chair with, or just send it to everybody?
Doesn't matter, you can, you can get a hold of the chair and copy me or however you wanna do it. Copy the whole planning commission, doesn't, doesn't matter, I'll leave that to your discretion. Uh, the other thing, one of our planning commissioner says that he was having issues accessing ordinances. They weren't so all that accessible. And he was having problems, uh, finding them or, uh, he wondered if they were posted. So, I told him that I would bring that back as well. I wrote the information, I wrote the question down, and I'm just bringing that back to the board as.
We're on the website.
I just checked it in the R, I don't, I, I reach out to him and, and make sure he knows how to, like, access the site.
Yeah, we're all in like P A format.
So, you know, that's.
I'll reach out to him.
And like I said, we worked on, uh, solar the entire meeting, you know, other than the citizens' time and. That's all I have.
Make a motion to accept the planning commissioner report?
Second.
Move by Sharp, second by Pinkowski, accept. PC report all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Monthly dispersments.
We're gonna read them all at once, and then we can go back and vote on everything. Total dispersments from the general fund, including, um, payroll, was twenty-two thousand, seventy-eight dollars and seventeen cents. There were no dispersments in, from the road fund. There was one check from the sewer fund for eighty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents to the village of Navy. And then two checks written, one to Mylan, one to L M R, for the fire fund, in the total of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and forty cents. The total dispersments for all funds was fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-three cents.
Did you say twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars?
Fire fund.
And forty cents.
Okay. I just wanna make sure.
Alright, general fund, I, I'll make a motion to approve thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-seven cents from the general fund.
Second.
Move by Turner, second by Pinkowski. Voca.
I have your initials wrong, hang on for a minute. Um, trustee Michael Pinkowski?
Yes.
Clerk Kimberly Sharp, myself, yes. Treasurer, release some more?
Yes.
Um, trustee Daryl Nichols?
Yes.
And supervisor Penny Turner?
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve eighty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents from the sewer fund. Move by Turner, second by Pinkowski. Voca, please.
Supervisor Penny Turner?
Yes.
Clerk Kimberly Sharp, that's myself, yes. Trustee Michael Pinkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Daryl Nichols?
Yes.
Treasurer, release some more?
Yes.
Motion carry.
I'll make a motion to approve twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty cents from the fire fund.
What second?
Move by Turner, second by Moore. Voca.
Um, treasurer, release more? Yes. Trustee Daryl Nichols?
Yes.
Supervisor Penny Turner?
Yes.
Trustee Michael Pinkowski?
Yes.
And clerk Sharp, myself. I vote yes. Motion carry.
There was some dispersments from the road fund, so that makes the total monthly expect, and I can't talk tonight, expenses. Fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. Unfinished business, I T.
Well, I don't know whether Anita put in the previous contract for I T right. I don't see it in here. But it was in here a few months ago. I can go back, back and figure it out. It was supposed to be on the agenda last month. That was what I was, sick as a dog. I don't know, I, I have access. That was the one that has a vaginal scale. That was, went up by years. No, it's not it. It's from I T right, O B C three.
No, it's from, um, uh, I T right. We were gonna vote on it initially in like June, so hang on for a minute.
Oh, June?
No, it's, it should've been on the last month too, and it should've been in last month's package, but I wasn't here, so I'm not sure.
Mr. West, can I have a reading? Can I get, can you write your phone number down for me? I have Allen's.
Sure.
I think I had it, but I, somewhere. I got Ken's, so. And do you want to attend, sir?
What's that?
Do you want to attend the meeting about the pond, or?
When's it gonna be?
I don't know yet.
Yeah.
Alright, if you wanna write down your name and number. These are the void, and I'm just thinking. Yeah, I'm assuming evening is everybody, everybody? Do, do you have my email? If you guys could just email me when you have issues. Yeah, you guys have the issue, should've put it on that last month, but doesn't look like it did.
Yeah, we saw it in the log.
Two quotes.
Yes. This one's one is from C T S, which is local. And the other one is from I T right, who is also local, is located in Lansing. I T right. Doesn't tell us how many hours we get in our service contract. So. I don't know how many hours are built into this contract. I T right.
Yeah, I know, but I'm I'm looking at the other one, it's gotta have charts or something about it.
C T S?
Yeah.
Yes. They're local.
Out of Adrian?
Yes. Well, no, actually, C T S is up above.
Yeah, I know.
It says Franklin Road.
I know, but I'm looking where it's sold to ship to, is where I was looking at it.
I think this is just an I I don't know.
Is that the right quote?
It's one of my contractors, that's why I'm curious about that.
I actually never noticed the name.
They're a general contractor.
And I just talked to him today, I mean, I literally never noticed the name. But the second page though, which is, they have the right quote on there. Has twenty hours that you pay for upfront that never expire. So if you don't use them, you have them in the bank. And he I asked him today and he looked at the quote, he did tell me that it's a hundred and twenty-six fifty when I talked to him, he probably doesn't realize that the the um name on it is wrong. Are you Jake?
No, but I I can I can tell you, there isn't anybody from that company here in this room.
No.
I I know that for a fact.
And there's nobody here from I T right either.
No, I don't know why that one's included on it.
Because we are going to be, the bank of ours is different, this is the same kind of service he's going to give us for our in here and for the server room. Whether the ri- the name on it is right or wrong, I will have to contact him and find out and. But we need I T service, so if you wanna put him aside and the next time the contract comes up, that's fine and go with I T right. We need some kind of I T service in here with some kind of contract. Period.
So our contract's expired right now?
Yes, our contract, our contract is expired right now, they're letting us go on a month-to-month basis while I got caught on while I got quotes. And the only one that actually came out here and actually looked at anything was the other guy. I had somebody telling me that I was supposed to call him back after he got back from vacation, so I was supposed to chase him to give him.
Well, I if I'm reading these quotes right, I T right is double the price of what this guy wants.
Per month, now, the the thing that it doesn't include um with is the per month is the the cloud backup storage. Because he doesn't know the space needed, uh the the required space needed, cause he didn't log into our server and touch our server because technically, you know, I T right is still doing it. So he didn't do that, but he looked at the rest of the building, he looked at how it was wired, um the octopus that we have in the main office that where all the wires are hanging down off the wall.
So is that something that uh he's gonna rewire this stuff and everything, does that fall under maintenance?
Um I have to ask about that, but he said that it it they would have to correct it because they would have to be running other stuff. Especially for the phones.
This is so to me, when I look at the C T S, that's an incomplete bid.
Yep.
Is what that is. And it's kinda hard to go on incomplete, now.
Well, let's go, we have to pick one or the other, we can't keep pushing these people off.
Well, we just got it.
No, you got this one six months ago.
When did you get this one?
Um like, yeah, last month.
Retabled it? I think we've actually tabled two months of them.
Yes, we tabled it before, you know, cause I was having a hard time getting people to call me, this guy came out, this is the only one I could get to come out.
I can't deal with uh having an incomplete contract before.
Well, then fine, let's go with I T right, let's make a decision and that and quit tabling stuff because it's it's ad nauseam.
Well, if I sign the ca- if I sign the contract, I'm gonna sign the contract of buying a house, buying a car, I'm gonna just make sure my contract is done completely correct.
Well, we've had I T right since before I got here, so pick one.
And your spending tax rate is one.
Exactly.
Unless you plan on doing I T yourself, because I am not gonna.
So I T right is, and this is per month?
Mm-hmm.
Is six thousand thirteen dollars per month?
That's sixty thousand, that's six thousand thirteen a year.
Oh, a year.
That's forty one forty-seven a year.
And this is a month?
A three, no, that's three thousand one time and a hundred and twenty-six fifty a month the other way. With on top of the three thousand, but you have the three thousand bank. How long is the contract for? And so it's it's this one's forty-one forty-seven and the other way is forty-five eighteen.
Yeah, it's incomplete. I'll go with I T right, but you need a motion, I'll make the motion for I T right.
Okay, I can handle that.
Alright, I have a motion by Nichols to go with I T right, to have seven.
Second.
By Nichols, second by Sharp. Um. Vocal.
Yeah, it's taken there.
Let's see the fourth.
I know. Supervisor Penny Turner.
Yes.
Treasure Lisa Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Daryl Nichols. Trustee Michael Pinkowski.
Yes.
Clerk Sharp, yes. Me, uh motion carried.
Alright, moving on, number two. Void, V O I T. That's the phones, right?
That is the phones, um again. One is not necessarily like the other, but you still have C T S that has their one here. There are the local ones, then you have the Pantera. And then you have U S I P, now, there are, when I was going through them again today, there is no switch or router on either U S I P or the Pantera one. And the one of them doesn't have you on, but it has you purchasing the hardware outright, which I believe is the Pantera one.
These companies came out here to.
No, only one of them does, because one of them's in California and the other one's in North Carolina and this one is here.
So they know they know our internet service here at the township.
This one does. Who's been here? These two have not. These two I talked to over the phone, I told them what we wanted, um we want something where we can have residents call in and not tell them, I'm sorry, I can't transfer you to another extension, I have to call back and dial pound whatever. This way we can we'll be able to transfer the phones, the the voicemail will go right into our our voicemails or into our um emails, so we can listen to them there. It's a more efficient than what we have that is probably from line. And we don't necessarily have to have um handsets, we can do it totally through our computers and our phones.
I would I would like to have a handset also.
Well, you can have handsets, I think he adds a couple of them. Well, it's all internet.
So this G A G A lead is yes.
Yes.
Internet, the internet that we have is gonna be able to.
Yes, they already checked the speed when they were here. Cause I had to update that router, I mean, last year.
And this one, we really saw it like seventy-five hits per second now, seventy-five, right?
Yeah, well, one of those. That's what I had for myself. It might buy off of. So I'm gonna get in this in the camera, we have pretty much split on Wi-Fi. My.
I know, you've got, I've seen them.
Yep, the very first one, the patron. He.
Okay, for sure that I can look like that.
That's the go for the box. And what is this for? This is for cameras and also um.
I thought you were going for hardwires, the.
There are, these some of these are hardwired, but the one, the door keypad that I have on the one.
Mm-hmm.
That's hardwired. Can work out with Wi-Fi?
Well, it's only one device.
Well.
But you would still probably wanna have some kind of key backup system in case the power's out and your Wi-Fi won't work at all.
Right. Right.
Well, the internet's out.
So after talking, these people pay much of that information.
I'm worried with the Pantera networks and the U S I P that there are hidden costs if they have to put in that. And that they're so far away, they don't have representatives here, that they'll sell us the equipment and then we won't get very good customer service, at least if we're here local. And have somebody to pitch at that's local that can come out here to help us. But that's my personal opinion.
So Pantera and the U S I P.
U S I P is in is in the North Carolina, I'm currently in North Carolina.
Where's where's this meeting, C T S or maybe?
This is the one. They have West Bluefield on their other one. But he called me from a round of listeners, all right. Now, we can definitely table this one again if we want to, because we've worked with the phone system as like it is for a moment and it's not as critical as the server and the I T and and that kind of thing, but it's still gonna be a better thing to have, I think.
Is this the three thirty total one-time thing or is it monthly?
It's monthly. That's why it says monthly, it's five five hundred.
Now, do we, and I would wanna get up the system, but do we have to go wireless, is there any way we can just get a new phones in here?
No, we can design, we can design it any way we want, we can have handsets, we can be wireless for some people, have handsets on other people's desks. You just have to remember that your handset is going is gonna have the range of the building, so if you're on the phone or your base is over there and you try to go out to the mailbox, you might not be able to do that. If I have my base on mine, I might not be able to go out to the mailbox, it all depends on where the base is on the phone. Cause it it's gonna work a similar to what you have on your desk phone, except for the ones that we have on our on our desk right now, don't transfer calls anywhere, you can just make calls from them, grab your voicemail from them and answer them when somebody dials your extension.
So we definitely need to upgrade our phones, I mean, even if we don't go wireless, we need new phones to be able to at least transmit.
Well, Mike's Mike's phone, um he can't, he can't see, there's no caller ID, he can't tell when he has voicemails, so he just checks it when he gets in there. Um yeah, his his screen is dead. We don't have the replacement.
That might be what you're gonna get with home.
I think he's making a replacement.
Maybe this replaces home?
So he can retrieve the voicemails?
He can get the voicemails, like.
Yeah, you can go buy those for.
You can get the voicemails, there's a voice ma- there's a voicemail message button, where you can actually play it back. But he can't see anything on the screen, somebody is down on his desk, he can't tell who it is, there's, yeah, everybody's spam call, probably.
So get this out of home?
Yes, it's dead. You can talk on it, nothing.
Call me, so.
That's why.
Well, I would definitely like to get new phones, I I like I said, I I don't care if we go wireless or not, but we definitely need new phones.
How about this, um and we want to, we can table it because the phones are not, as I said, as important. And maybe I can get them to come into the next meeting and explain a little better, cause they're local, these people are not gonna come, the ones from North Carolina and California are not gonna come to London Township to talk to us, but these people. So do you wanna do that?
Yeah, and if you could, I I'd like to get you.
These are the, yeah, these are the.
Yes.
Um also, Kim, if you could get a quote for just replacing our phones without having the wire the.
You know, without doing voiceover I P?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have as many phones we need for the hall.
Get a quote for those.
So. With that, we move on to motion I P. So motion to table it, I'll make the motion to table it until next month?
Second.
By Sharp, second by Nichols to table until next month, all in favor?
Aye.
Fine.
Opposed? Motion carries. Update on the building department secretary resolution. We just hired Carla about two months ago and she's doing an excellent job. I've gotten several calls about people saying how light she is and how helpful she is. So I would like, we approved fifteen hours, I would like to raise it to twenty-five hours per week. Um I think most of our other clerks can get twenty hours, so I'd like to raise her to twenty-five, so we can have her in the building department more often.
Yeah, I've got a lot of uh compliments to residents on here.
Sorry, my ideas.
I got a lot of compliments from residents on here too.
So all you did was change it to twenty-five?
Yeah, from twenty to twenty-five hours, I like to approve.
From twenty to twenty-five or from?
I've I've started from fifteen to twenty-five. And make sure until you're ready, from Sharp's fifteen to twenty-five.
It was fifteen.
Yes, fifteen to twenty-five. And she's gonna work out, maybe work in some evening hours too, too.
I'll make a motion to accept the updated resolution with it moving from fifteen hours per week to twenty-five hours per week.
One second.
By Sharp, second by Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Well, since we're adding uh ten more hours, do we need to roll call vote that?
Money.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause it would cost us more money.
Okay, uh trustee Michael Pinkowski.
Yes.
Treasure Lisa Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Daryl Nichols.
Yes.
Supervisor Penny Turner.
Yes.
Clerk Sharp, that's myself, yes, motion carried.
Moving on, new business, twenty twenty-three township calendar. Looks like we have a couple of times that are holiday, um planning commission uh on Monday is New Year's Day observed. Um so I'd like to move that to Tuesday the third. Um September fourth is Labor Day, so if we could move that to Tuesday, September fifth.
I I I will not be able to make that January third meeting. Nor the September fifteenth. I've got a meeting the first Tuesday of every month, so I don't, you know, that upfront, I won't be able to make either one of those, so.
Oh.
Whatever business is.
You guys have done on Wednesdays before, haven't you?
Yep.
Because of that?
Yep.
Alright, let's go to Wednesday, the fourth of January. September sixth, which is on a Wednesday. September sixth, which is on a Wednesday. And then for our board.
January fourth.
Yes.
And September sixth.
Sixth. And then in October, our meeting falls on Columbus Day, so I'd like to move that to Tuesday the tenth.
Is that one of the, well, is that one of those cases?
That I add.
That you, you said you can't do it, first Tuesday?
First, first Tuesday.
Okay.
Um. We're good then. And do we have to give each date, Kim, or do you just?
Well, we're gonna post it on the website. Are those the other ones you wanted to change?
Some of the ones I see, I see something different.
Well, um, I do have a question about then next December then. Um, the twenty-fifth falls on a Monday, so. All good. Who am I?
Yeah.
I was thinking about the wrong one. I'm not sure. There's no other holiday. And what's the? You doing with this resolution now?
It's next, I'm just adding a couple days.
Okay.
That got somehow missed.
Hmm.
Alright, I'll make a motion to accept the twenty twenty-three calendar for the Board of Trustees and the Planning Commission dates.
Second.
Moved by Turner, second by Pankowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Update holiday resolution. I just wanted to add to our legal holiday resolution, somehow we didn't put in President's Day or Columbus Day. So I would like to add those to the resolution as legal holidays. So I'll make a motion to update the holiday resolution. I don't get the number in here, I was only three, I don't know if the original number was.
I don't know, I have to look it up. That's funny, cause I was looking at it earlier and I don't remember.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve resolution for the London Township legal holidays to add President's Day and Columbus Day.
I'll second it.
Moved by Turner, second by Moore, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Supervisor appointments. I don't have a whole lot this calendar that are coming up due. Um, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Doug Darling to the Planning Commission. Um, term expires twelve thirty-one and twenty-five.
What, was that one more time?
Doug Darling to the Planning Commission. I'm gonna do them all, then we'll just do one motion. If everybody's okay with that, or do you wanna do them all separate?
I'm fine with it that way, same way we do the dispersals, so.
Alright, um, my second appointment, reappointment is Amy Hirsch to the Planning Commission. Her term expires twelve thirty-one and twenty-five. This ZBA Board, which is the zoning Board of Appeals, I wanna reappoint Daryl Nichols. Term expires twelve thirty-one and twenty-five. And Mark Gagnier is up for reappointment. This expires twelve thirty-one and twenty-five. Board of Review, all three of them are up for reappointment. Mark Gagnier, Lori Mann, and Amy Sholus, twelve thirty-one and twenty-four for all three. That's all I have. Make sure this is on.
With all of the ones that were on the page now.
Who is the third one for uh?
Amy.
Mark, Amy, and you?
Lori.
Lori Mann, they've been on it for quite a few years.
Pardon?
And they're, those are two-year terms. ZBA is three-year terms and Amy Hirsch is three-year terms.
Hmm.
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to accept, um, your appointment of Doug Darling to the Planning Commission.
All in favor? I need a second, I'm sorry.
I thought Penny made the motion.
Yeah, yeah, can we do it all?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna do them all.
Uh, Penny made the motion.
Oh, she made the motion, okay, never, then you need seconds.
Right.
Sorry, my brain's not working right now, I'll just go and second that one.
So. Moved by Turner, second by Sharp to accept supervisors' appointments.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Naxus weed ordinance. We were getting complaints about people's uh weeds, not mowing them. And I've been researching, could not find anywhere where there was a naxus weed and grass control ordinance. So the attorney and I uh got together and designed this ordinance. As for naxus weed and grass ordinance control, and we have to publish it every uh March. Giving people notice that, you know, they have to have their grass and stuff cut by May first. If not, then they will be in violation of this ordinance. And we can, then in turn, if they don't do it, we can mow it ourselves and, and put it on the tax, and then it gets the taxes. So I would like to make a motion to approve the naxus weed and grass control ordinance.
We're gonna see on there?
Um.
Aye.
Good question.
So this doesn't have to do with planning permission?
No, it's a standalone ordinance. I guess we have. It's the cost plus twenty percent for administration. It's the cost, so the actual cost of mowing grass plus twenty percent for administration fees.
Is there, are you gonna put a number on the cost to do it, or you're gonna do it per whatever?
Yeah.
Well, I don't think somebody's, that's got ten acres should be charged the same as somebody that's got a quarter.
Well. Some people in some of the locations on that ordinance, if you got X amount of acres, you only gotta cut one or two acres of it to comply. There's a small amount that you have to cut to make it comply, so that's a stipulation too that you gotta follow up with too. If you got ten acres, Darrell, and they, and you're only, then you only have to cut two or three acres of it to comply.
What's this here? This section provides that land zoned agriculture will lawfully use for farming in a manner appropriate to such use, for example, portions of land containing exempt vegetations situated within the townships will be exempt.
But this is more residential that the stipulations are in, the agriculture is different than residential.
Yeah, this is mainly for people that are letting the grass grow ten feet tall and not mowing it. Cause something you're doing, Carl, is that what you're worried?
You have to weigh your weight down.
No, he was worried about why they didn't cut the grass again.
You gotta go some.
Oh, you gotta get bigger more.
It says this section establishes the duty to cut to a height not to exceed ten inches. Disturbing and remove all weeds and grass grain on a property. You should be good.
Totally, thank you.
So I will make a motion to approve the naxus weed ordinance.
Second.
Moved by Turner, second by Pankowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Kim, could you make sure that she gets a favor of us to not just put the paper?
Okay.
ZA computer.
Is this piece of it, cause this is not.
No, that's just what I was, like, so you guys could reference it.
A few words, I think.
Um,ZA computer, deputy clerk computer, EPB.
E-pole book, this one's mine too. Um, I was going through the minutes. Um, I found out that at some point the zoning person's computer was, was replaced, but then it was given to the assessor when they didn't have a zoning person for a while. So he has the older one that takes ten minutes to come up, if the power goes out, it takes a long time, takes on its last legs. Um, the deputy clerk's computer is probably just as old. The treasury's been, treasurer's been changed, the deputy treasurer's been changed. I don't know, and the supervisor's been changed.
No, I, I, I try to do these Zoom meetings, I have no camera, I have no microphone, so I have to get on my phone and talk to them through my phone, to try, try to do these Zoom meetings, it's like.
Well, and then, um, see, we have a current E-pole book, it was purchased when Larry Lee was here. Um, so it's a little older. Um, I want to upgrade the E-pole book to something that's more compliant with the state of Michigan, with the two thousand nineteen guidelines, cause this one is even older. But we could use the one that we used on the, with the E-pole book and give it to somebody in the building whose computer needs to be upgraded, whether it goes to zoning or goes to the supervisor. Whoever it goes to will have a new computer in the laptop. It has enough memory on it to work. The two older ones, I don't think are gonna work, um, to hand those down, I think they're too old, they're probably at least ten years old. But if we're gonna be upgrading the phone system, we have to make sure that all of the computers will work with it. If we don't do the voiceover IP, that's fine, but the, the zoning computer is gonna die. It's dying quick, it took ten minutes to come up the other day.
We can, we can use ARPA money for this too.
Um. Yeah, now the E-pole book, if I hand that down, there's a grant I can use to help me pay for that through the state, but I have to do it before December thirty-first.
For the E-pole book?
For the E-pole book, so I can get that money back.
And the others, um, we can use the ARPA money for?
Yeah, so, um, I wanted to discuss that. I wanted to get approval to at least replace the E-pole book, cause that will take one computer that we can hand down to somebody else. Um, and then I can apply for the grant money before the thirty-first, and then I can get quotes for the other computers that we need, because the ZA's computer is dying, it's gonna go. And anything in that hard drive is gonna go with it, hopefully everything's safe to the server.
Well, it sounds like Penny needs a computer as well.
She does too.
Alright, um.
But I can pass the E-pole book either down to zoning, the one that we currently have, cause there's nothing on it.
Will you do the?
The only thing we put on it is the voter list for the election, and then after the election, it comes back off, it, it's empty, it's got nothing on it but windows and.
I say that we do the E-pole.
Do you have any idea what a computer will cost?
I know the E-pole book, the, the laptop will probably cost about four hundred.
Okay.
Maybe four fifty, I wanted to do it last month, but I was sick as a dog, so I wasn't here, so I couldn't take advantage of any of the Black Friday sales.
And a regular computer, what, what, just a ballpark for you?
If you want a desktop, um. I have to look, I just don't know, I mean, I know that the one that they purchased for Treasury was probably about somewhere between a thousand and thirteen hundred. Um, it all depends on what we want on it and how expandable it needs to be, so I want to be able to get some quotes for that, but the E-pole book, I want to make sure that I can do that now. So I can pass that one down, we can get IT rate out here to set that laptop up, so it can be used as a computer here for this building. Um, and then I can get quotes from them for the computers, cause that's where we've gotten them before, which is great for IT.
So what's your recommendation on the computer, then you're gonna, you're gonna pass the one down that's got to uh?
It's already got, I think it's got a camera, but I'm not sure.
You're gonna pass that one down to zoning, zoning, and you're gonna need a new one.
Whoever, yes.
What's your not to exceed price for that new one?
We need two new ones.
Well, the new, the E-pole book, I would say not to exceed four fifty.
So she's gonna do the E-pole book, that's the one we're gonna do for the books, and then she's gonna get quotes for, for yours and whoever else's deputy clerk.
Get quotes, and then get quotes for that one.
And get the quotes for the other ones.
Three.
So.
So there's gonna be two motions here, there's gonna be a motion to update the E-pole book and spend no more than four fifty.
For four fifty, do it?
And then.
Just do five hundred, basically.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, we'll do five hundred. And then to get quotes for, and then the other ones, the motions are, you know, so I can just get the quotes for the o- other computers that are.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of an EPB, not to exceed five hundred dollars. So that Kim can get quotes by, excuse me, get, apply for a grant by December thirty-first. Please, second the motion, can we not make all of one motion?
Yeah, we can make it more than one.
And then to ex, to get quotes for two more desktop computers.
Well, more of them's not gonna have to go to arm for the five hundred, because that's money.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, let's do, let's do the, let's do the E-pole for, for now.
Second.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll make a motion, I'll make my motion, then.
I second the motion.
Moved by Turner. Seconded by Nichols, we'll call it.
That's the fastest. Um, supervisor Penny Turner.
Yes.
Clerk Sharp, that's myself, yes. Treasury Lisa Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Daryl Nichols.
Yes.
Uh, trustee Michael Pankowski.
Yes.
And I'm motion carry.
Motion carry, I'll make a motion to authorize Kim to get quotes for two desktop computers.
Who's the two?
Um, one will be for the deputy clerk and myself.
I'll make sure we have the uh right number.
Can we make sure that's got a camera and a microphone and?
That's, that'll get the pass number and I wonder which is wrong.
Oh. Did anybody second that?
Yes, I can do it. Moved by Turner, seconded by Nichols, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, moving on to number six, make, number six. Make an adjustment to pay for resolution twenty twenty-one oh one.
I don't know what that is.
Twenty in everybody's thing, I looked it up.
I put it down there. I wanna change it, instead of twenty dollars per direction, it needs to be forty dollars.
I'm gonna lay it down on your desk. I just see your.
And that's fine.
And Lisa, do you wanna kind of explain so everybody in the audience knows what it does, what this resolution is?
This is the resolution for when someone um has brought in the flags all around the township. It was only twenty dollars, and with everything raising, and we didn't even touch this. Um, I just thought that twenty dollars is like, if somebody start coming out there to do it, we might as well do it something more than twenty dollars. So I figured forty dollars should be reasonable. Sometimes it changes quite often.
A lot, this mess is a lot.
With taxes taken out and everything out of that forty dollars, you make it for twenty dollars, that ain't much. No, I mean, that's probably.
Yeah, you would ask for it.
Exactly.
So you made your motion.
Yes, I'm making a motion to change it from twenty dollars to forty dollars.
Well. That would be a little sucky, but.
Moved by Moore, seconded by Nichols. And we need to do a whole couple of those.
Uh, trustee Michael Pankowski.
Yes.
Treasury Lisa Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Daryl Nichols.
Yes.
Clerk Sharp, myself, yes. And supervisor Penny Turner.
Let's see.
Motion carry.
Okay, twenty twenty-three poverty exemption policy. This is a housekeeping thing we have to do every year, um, for the Board of Review, it sets our uh poverty levels. Um, so that people can come in and apply to threaten the taxes. Uh, lower, or now you can do a hundred percent, fifty percent, or twenty-five percent, it's up to the Board of Review's discretion. Depending on what their account is.
So Mike's fault?
I'm gonna have to have you move the certification.
To be disruptive.
Disrupting my meeting here. Alright.
I'm okay.
Yeah. Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three poverty exemption policy guidelines.
Second.
Moved by Turner, seconded.
Oh, that was on the mic, Jim.
Seconded by Pankowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, Mike, I think you put this on tablet, internet and speakers.
Um, with all the, uh, new stuff that we're getting, is there something that we can look into, like the hydropuses, as you call it, back there, all fixed?
Um. That's something I can approach IC right with, considering that IC right was the one who did it, I'm not sure, but everything I can find out.
Because I mean, it's a hard time, you've brought in.
I know, it has a hard time getting out. You want the extended time. Uh, I did talk about that to CPS, and he said that the extenders that I have are not commercial grade. There's not a thing. So there, and we don't have household.
Because I tried to watch the PCD last month, and it was portable, sometimes you can actually go on the next day and updates it, but it was half a year.
Well, I haven't been watching my phone, I have no idea whether.
I, I am telling you, that is probably the number one complaint that I get. That people can't watch the meetings in real time, and everything is over, done, gone, but and we've been dealing with this issue for two years, longer, longer than two years.
Didn't the board approve the, or seven hundred dollars for an Apple?
No, they only approved like, like five hundred dollars.
I thought it was eight hundred.
July of twelve, or July, uh, or July meeting, we, the board approved for an iPad eight, uh, for a Galaxy, seven hundred dollars.
And when?
July twelfth, July iPad eight. Seven hundred dollars.
And when?
July twelfth, July iPad eight. Because that, that's a lot of complaints that are getting, this is.
I just complained after.
Well, even when I was using my iPad that is the same as Amanda's, we still have the same top. So I don't know what to issue it, other than the extenders, um, I can either try to use the Wi-Fi, or I can try to use the AT&T, because we've got a tower that way and a tower that way. We're right between two towers, we should have no problems.
Well, maybe get some, try those, or we, you know, we have to look into this, let's look into this definitely, because we can.
Are you volunteering?
Yeah.
Okay, it's all yours. I'll make a motion to, when it's done, you do it.
And then, and then, uh, also, uh, PA system, um, I was sitting back at the back of the meeting, nobody uses the mic, as you can see, I keep leaning towards it, doesn't, I mean, it doesn't, doesn't pick up, I mean, people in the back can't even hear it.
I'm kind of.
I couldn't even hear anybody, it's portable.
No, it's a game. It's a game.
I suggest.
Couldn't hear anybody? Why you?
I was gonna say, my suggestion is a hanging mic. Then we don't have to worry about if people are using these like they're supposed to. Um, I know the planning commission acts like they got the plan or something, so they keep pushing them further for the back. So if we do a, a hanging mic.
Maybe a hanging mic help for, you know, for residents as well.
I would, would it do?
You'd need two. That works, mics only good for sixteen feet. That's more than sixteen feet. I would suggest one, two, if you want something back here.
See, the only thing that concerns me with back there, you've got that furnace running.
Right.
And, and, and the little sidebar conversations, you're gonna be picking all that up.
Yes, you are.
Well, the sidebar conversations can be done elsewhere.
I agree, but you know what happens?
Mm-hmm.
It happens, and, and people might be talking about something that people don't want. People are here, so I mean, I'm just saying.
And people shouldn't be talking about it, then, but they go home and watch it.
You can't watch it.
So.
Can't hear it anyway, so what's the matter?
We definitely need to.
But fire speakers, best thing to do is put two wall mount speakers up there.
What's our PA look like in here?
Well, it.
Wasn't that one of those things that, that?
They have to fire one.
Isn't that supposedly like new within the last five years, from like when Ron was here?
Yeah, the thing of this, the other regime, I brought in, me and Mike both, Mike came with me. We researched everything that needed to be, and brought it in two times. And gave it to Melissa because she'd lose it. So, with that being said, she asked for it a third time. I said, I'm not giving them a third time, I'm volunteering to do this stuff.
We were gonna do all the wiring.
We were gonna, we were gonna rewire everything, and, you know, uh, we did say we'd try to save these speakers, but you, you're not gonna save it, you do. These are old, old, uh, stereo speakers, somebody, probably Jerry took out of an old stereo, that's what these are. They're not public address speakers. So, my suggestion is, that PA end is like, uh, Kim said.
Janky?
No.
New?
It, it, it's fairly new, but what they did was the stuff that we suggested that they buy, they lost twice, and, and I said, that with it, I'm, I'm done, you know? So they went out and they bought substandard shit, uh, excuse me, but that's true.
That's simple.
The microphones that I wanted them to buy, that's not the mics that I told them to buy, that's not the PA end that I told them to buy. They went out and bought rinky-dank junk, and that's why you got what you got. If they would've bought what I've told them to buy, they wouldn't have this situation you'd have right now. Well, you would with these speakers, the speakers would have to be replaced, yeah.
There again, ARC of money, I don't wanna give no ARC of money back.
Right.
And this is what we can use it for, so that it's not costing a tax for your money.
There you go.
All we need to do is get us some damn mirrored ball here sticking in the middle of the room.
I'm coming up to do it, how you?
I'm spending the money on something, and that, and that's, if that's something.
Sit down, we're talking that together?
Yeah, but if you wanna use, you know, the conference mics, they are good, but they pick up three sixty degrees.
So what are you suggesting, we save up these?
No.
Three sixty.
No, people are not gonna use those.
I know.
You know, I mean, that's, that's a proven fact. You know, you either, you either get people that, that, you know, don't like leases. It's not gonna pick her up, you know, two feet away, for one thing that.
What kind of example are you setting? Here on the complete month of planning commission, and you're sitting on there.
I thought it was loud enough.
No, no, you're not.
No, okay.
But, you know, it, it's, so the, so the, the conference mics would be great.
And will that still pick up some out there?
Yes, if, if somebody's, you know, like if Sean's standing up here talking, yes, that's gonna pick him up.
Within sixteen feet?
Uh, yes, within sixteen feet.
Would you need mics out there?
No.
You would only need it back here.
You, you could actually, you could actually use two conference mics up there, and from where Sean's standing, you're talking to a normal tone of voice, you should be able to, it should pick him up just absolutely wonderfully, you know? And, uh, that would be my suggestion, with two wall mount, at least two wall mounts, right up there, right up to the ceiling, where the sound would be going out over top of everybody, it would hit that back wall. You know, and.
Oh, it's, it's hiding there.
See, not, not only that, see, these speakers were never, never, I checked into them, you know, since, uh.
It's been?
Been associated.
Been a lot of years.
All, all this wiring is, is just, it's little bitty.
Speaker wire?
Speaker wire, and it's, it's like car type speaker wire that Jerry or whomever ran through and, and put those in. And, you know, I mean, to, to push speakers, you gotta have some good cable, you know?
Alright, I make an entertaining motion, then Mike, you and John check on these PA system.
Uh, internet, the ti, internet.
And Mike, you check on the tablet and internet.
Well.
Or tablet with internet.
We already, uh.
We already offered.
We already.
Okay, and Mike, you go get it, you don't have a card, though, do you?
That was one of the big things, uh, getting.
He doesn't mind getting reimbursed, it's okay.
I can't, I mean, I do it all the time for work, but this is great.
Donate some work, which you require.
You volunteer.
Can I do that, can I even get reimbursed, if I go buy it?
Yeah, yeah. But, but why until we have any, we have the approval of the, of the money?
We already approved it, not to exceed over seven hundred dollars.
Well, I remember when I got that tablet, um, back, they didn't have any iPads, and you guys wanted it now, so I got one I could get.
So we've already actually spent that money on that.
How much was that?
Not all of it. I'd have to back and look.
I mean.
But not, not.
Well, how about this?
But you can't find an iPad for seven hundred.
I'll send over time. Let's figure out something, we need to figure out something for the internet.
Well, you think, you, you, you give me some prices, and we'll work together and, and send me an email and, and.
I mean, I wanna come in and look at this mortgage word of wires and stuff, and.
Have a wonderful time.
Like, we have to do something for the internet, because if we're getting voice over IP, this system stuff, we have to have decent internet.
We have to have the signal be able to reach through these walls. And it's not getting through that.
Well, I can tell you, these black walls are a huge issue, I don't care what building you're in, it's the black walls. And you better be able to come up with a commercial, um, router, or, and all the little, uh.
Extenders?
Extenders.
Yeah, the extenders.
And, and they're still huge issues, it's, it's the block walls, I'm telling you.
What about hotspot?
They need to be put right up there in the ceiling, you know, how many ever feet apart that they need to be? And, you know, you might end up with probably more than you think you're gonna end up with, just to get it throughout this building. But, you know, month after month after month, citizens try to connect, and they try to get on here, they try to listen, and they can't do it yet. And we've been dealing with shit for two years, us, this board has.
Yep.
This board has, and it's not remedied yet.
Oh, I agree.
It ain't, it ain't fixed.
No, it's not.
Spend the money.
What about hotspot?
We got over one for.
It's got its own data plan, it's not gonna matter whether it's got a hotspot or not, it's got a data plan already, so a hotspot is just taking that hotspot and sending it to a tablet that already has a data plan, which kind of doesn't make any sense.
Just upping margin.
I'm just, no, that's a hotspot, is just a, a mobile hotspot, and that can be a mobile hotspot, so that either.
But I'll try, what, uh, what service do you use to do that?
Verizon.
I have AT&T, well, maybe. Uh, next one, what I'll do is I'll, I'll report, we'll see through AT&T to put it up there and see, you know, I'll do it through my personal, uh.
I've got Verizon, I got three bars.
I got AT&T and I got four bars.
So do I, I have AT&T, I have four bars on my phone, too.
I got three, right.
So maybe we should look at AT&T.
So this is, so, you know, when you hear people talk about, you know, a lack of internet in London Township, and I mean, it's not, it's not just London Township, it's across the whole state, it, it sucks, the lack of it. I, I mean, I know they're working on all these bills, and I am telling you, I have been on phone call, Zoom meeting, meetings, one after another, and they ain't got about nowhere in the last two years on this.
No. The closest companies within reach, they're the only ones that have been meeting with me, willing to work with me on this grant applications to try to get, I mean, we've been, and the feds just come out with their mapping on weird, and of course, we are.
Well, according to the Fed map, we can get Comcast at my house, which I know is a lie, you know?
So anyway. I, I was going through those boxes, you know, it would last four months, six months, you know, cost you a hundred dollars a month, for unlimited, and da 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 da. So, uh, I stopped by an AT&T office, and, uh, I told the guy, I said, look, you know, um, I had this for six months or eight months, I said, it worked flawless, just, I mean, no complaints whatsoever, but the last two, three times, they've all worked like that. And so he pulls up this map, and he goes, well, these are AT&T towers. I said, well, we had AT&T on the, the router, the device, he says, yeah, but that device is a secondary device. That's not an AT&T device, that's a secondary device that we sublease them space or whatever, and we can cut that off any time, and they'll have to renegotiate it. So what he sold me was this thing called an Orbi.
I s, I asked the AT&T about an Orbi, and they told me they didn't know what the hell I was talking about.
Well, I got the guy's card at home, I'll send you to him, because he helped me set it up.
Okay.
And I am telling you, I've had this probably, I don't know how many months, six, eight months, wherever it's been, and, and I, I had to buy the Orbi, I, I bought that, and then the unlimited service, whatever it is, through AT&T, because they're their towers. It's AT&T's towers, that's the difference. It's, it's worked flawless, I mean, it might have been slow a couple times, I mean, but it, it has worked great, I, I don't have any complaints yet. So, uh, you know, he told me that's what the difference is. He said, that's the difference, they're our towers, they're not those folks.
Yeah.
Those guys just piggyback on AT&T, and, you know, at any given time. Yep, at any given time, we can change the, um.
Data restriction.
Absolutely.
Depending on how many customers are.
So the Orbi itself is the internet device?
Yeah, it's a router, it's probably about that tall, and it's about this big around, the bottom, and it kind of goes up like this. And we bought it, um, we bought it offline, is where we bought it, we bought it off like, I don't know.
Best buyers, I looked them up, because I, I went to the AT&T store.
Which one?
And he, uh.
In Monroe?
Remember, I don't remember which one.
Because I went to Monroe and Celine, and both of them.
No, I was in Ann Arbor.
Both of them.
Over by Ann Arbor, Celine Rothen, over in there.
Both of them told me the same exact thing.
Because you told me you needed to know where Orbi was.
Well, that guy needs to, uh.
Fun job.
Because I was in two different ones, and I will give you that guy's name, that set that up for me.
I will take it.
So it worked, so it worked great, I, I, I don't have any complaints.
I can't tell you how many times I have to keep resetting what I have, two or three times a day, because it starts going down to a crawl, so I'll go for that.
And maybe that's the difference.
So.
Hey, maybe, let's try it next meeting, can you bring that in, so we can try it for this, just to see? Just, I mean, why spend money on it, I know it's your personal thing, but just, but just to see.
You're right.
Come on, take him for the team, Daryl.
Well, I mean, there's no point in, you know, you, you know, doing something if it's not gonna work.
He needs a cell phone while you're at it.
But, but here, here's the thing, that is, that's not gonna be what we're looking for here.
You got unlimited. I, I understand, but it's, it's gonna be something for that, yes, I get that.
That's not residential, not commercial, what you're trying to get to, I mean, you've gotta find something strong enough.
That can handle the traffic.
For what you're doing, yes.
That's right, that's not two people, or three or four people, or whatever, on that at the same time. I can tell you that, um, there's been four people that's been connected to that, and two of them were gaming, I was before. Two people were doing the gaming, and two people were just online. Haven't had any issues, so, you know, maybe it, it works for me, and it don't work for somebody else, but, I mean, it's, it's worked for me.
Alright, I made a motion to have Mike and John check on the speaker systems, and Mike check on the tablet and internet system. Do you have a second?
Second.
You're talking, you're talking full PA system.
I want, I, I want some money, you know? It's gonna, I have no money.
There you go. Because I mean, that, that amplifier works, but not long.
Yeah.
It's a little quiet now, it, it's not so hot.
You know why? I took it parking.
It's a light fire.
Yeah, I don't wanna give no money back.
He needs to get basic cleaning, huh?
Alright, so, moved by Turner, seconded by Nichols. Did you get the motion?
No, I need your review.
I'll make a motion to have John and Mike check on the speaker system. And then, Mike, check on the tablet and internet. Just moved by myself and seconded by Nichols. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, here, you didn't have this.
I emailed you guys, and I did not add it to the agenda, or it got missed somehow, so I apologize.
Unless you wanna talk to Turner, or to trustee, he's coming to you.
Well, I can, but we can't, I can't obey it.
You can't vote on it, though?
Well, most of them is okay.
Yeah.
Is it, is it just?
If you have a period of time you can question.
There isn't any of the chairs or anything like that?
I didn't have the questions actually, I did all the questions again. They couldn't come today, but I could probably now get them to come next month.
Nine months ago.
They're both available by phone, if I needed to call them, they said they'd be well by the clock.
Alright, second citizen's time. Anybody?
What'd she say?
I do, buddy.
You're so funny, girl.
Before that pond, man, how come I didn't get a letter in there?
You should have.
I didn't either.
They go by registered mail.
And I thought maybe it was because I work for Ed.
The ones that are going out now are definitely going out registered mail. The ones that maybe Ron was doing, I don't know. I didn't take any registered mail stuff to the post office, as far as I know, they didn't do it on the postie machine here, which is what Mike did today. So, I don't know.
Let me look to see if he's got a list on where he, you should've, even though you work for him, you should've still got, I got, I got one.
Because Ed came to my house and had me sign a paper, because I was the one wanting to burn, cause I don't wanna look at that stuff. I got two little babies, I don't want them, you know, going over there. And they come to find out, now he's a hundred feet from the property line, then there's a burner, and he tells me to keep my kids in my own yard. Are you kidding me right now? You dug all the way to my property line, you're gonna tell me that. But anyway, not to keep bringing that subject up. Then, I know he's allowed to bring debris in, concrete, whatever. He's bringing in topsoil with wood in it and dumping it in a pile right next to his driveway. Is he allowed to bring that in? Is he got nursery license?
You say the topsoil with?
With wood chips and stuff in it.
I'll just check with the state on that. I didn't ask about that one, check with the concrete and all that kinda stuff.
Now, that's a shitstorm.
I got a card.
What about, uh, is he gonna fence that?
I mean, after it's done?
That's gonna be dangerous.
We have no, nothing in the ordinance saying.
I had set out there with a shotgun, keep them away.
I hear.
I'm telling you.
I know.
And he don't live there.
Yeah, there's, I think there's anything in the ordinance saying that.
Leave ten foot high.
No, I hate that somebody get hurt. I do think that twelve won't, that twelve comes back in, you guys need to vote. I think.
Well, chip my.
I think we need to readdress our ordinance thing.
I agree.
That extraction just got, uh.
I wouldn't, my brain.
The new one, yeah.
The new extraction just got approved.
Cause I don't get how Ron pulled that through though. How did Ron get that, that pond in? When I worked for Ed for eight years, and he's always had to stay a hundred feet from the property line, and that pond is his land, so he gets to dig up the hundred foot. I do not understand that. And I'll testify to that in court, I do not get that.
Are you talking about a hundred feet, the pond?
He's never dug, we never dug any pond in anybody's property in this, in this township, but Ed gets to dig his.
But that's, that's what Mike said, that wasn't.
Yeah, but how did Ron get that through there though?
Mike or Ron?
Ron. Ron, Mike wasn't even the zoning guy then. How did Ron do that? Because he, cause he was buddies with Ed?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that once they had that public hearing, wasn't that one of the requests from residents that a burn be put up and you answer?
No, Ed brought that up because of me, cause I signed that paper, but I never got a, I never got a, a meeting on that. I never got a paper in the mail.
But Ed, Ed only had, like, uh, I don't think he had all the burns on there. I, I got my map.
But Ed's changed the site plans four times, and he's working on another one. I just found out he's gonna bring another site plan in, so he can dewater off that property. And he wasn't supposed to dewater any water off that property pumped off there.
No, on new site plans, they go to planning commission for approval. Like, he changes the site plan, it's gonna come to you for approval?
Well, it goes, it goes before Mike first, and Mike's the one that directs him.
If it's a minor change, then.
Maybe I ought to sue Mike then for not getting that paper.
A minor, a minor change, Mike can do, if it's a major change, he has to go in front of the PC, and pretty sure it would have to be a, a public hearing and everything on that.
I think he needs to run this board, this is the board I elected.
Dewatering would be a major change, we've been told for more than a year now, but there's no dewatering.
Explain what dewater is.
Remove water off the site. He's digging holes, water's coming up, he's not allowed to take that water and remove it from his site. He can only take it and dig one hole and pump water from another hole into that first hole. He can't send water off his property.
So I'm, I'm gonna ask you, when you bring this up to Mike, what does he say? What does Mike say about?
He gotta talk to the planning commission, and he's gotta talk to Ben.
It's the planning commission.
And he never gets back.
But here's the thing.
Wait a minute, he never gets back with me, Daryl, that's why I told you in the planning commission. Nothing is getting done, and I'm tired of waiting.
But here's the thing, it's not the planning commission.
I didn't say it was.
No, but, I, you know.
I'm saying, you guys ain't, you guys, you guys ain't gotta like to stand up. I wanna talk to you guys, and you guys are the ones I elected. I didn't elect the ZA, I didn't elect the planning commission. I elected you. I voted for you guys. That's where it needs to come to, so I can talk to you, cause you have the power.
You, you do, but the guy that's out there policing the, the projects, is the zoning administrator. He has the power. I don't have the power to go out there and red tag something and say, we're gonna shut this down. That guy right there, Mike, can talk to the attorney, he can talk to whoever he needs to talk to, to fulfill his duties as a zoning administrator. Now, if somebody's doing something that they're not supposed to be doing, you bring it to the board, and the board will address it to Mike. And, you know, here's the thing, Mike comes to planning commission meetings every so often. Why isn't he at the township board meeting?
That's a request we can make.
I, I wanna make that request right now. He has hit all the township board meetings.
Do it for comments.
Yes, probably. So anyway, not to get in it too much with it, okay, it's just like I went to Ron about stuff. You know, Ed and Ron were buddies, I know that. Ron did a lot of shit for Ed. You know, this is, if you want it to come out, I'll bring it out, but I'm not gonna. I want you guys to do something about it. You figure it out. I know it, Daryl.
See, and I, I'm not getting updates, I, you know, you said that.
I'm giving you updates, that's why I think that, I don't want that planning commission voting on shit in this township. I want this board doing it. That's what I think you guys need to vote right now and put it back on your board. And I want you guys to be in charge of that ZA. If he ain't doing his job, Ed was already red tagged. Ed was already red tagged and nothing got done about it. Cause he ain't doing his job, get another one in there that's gonna do the job.
So, was anybody outside that was fighting?
I know, but what are we gonna do?
I knew how to red tag on it, and I knew.
I got a picture of it.
And I saw the picture of, cause I was here that day that you came in.
Yes, and you told, and I asked you about the, was signing off on the pond, you said, well, Ed's checked, stayed here for four months or some blah, blah, blah story. It's just like, what is going on with this township? Let's get this shit straight.
So, what we can do, when was, my question is, and this is a good thing, is when did the, the vote, the poll or whatever you're talking about, put it?
Right after the planning commission, or, yeah, the planning commission in November, him and Roger walked outside after the meeting, and they stood out there and said that they were gonna put a post in, so I couldn't get my comb by now.
So that's November meeting?
And the guy that was with me, my friend, overheard the conversation, he filled out a letter, brought it in here and got it notarized, and it, it's on the board record.
Well, we would've seen, we would've seen.
And then post came out three weeks later, what?
We would've seen, you know, red tag for the poll, and it's not even.
You wanna see it, you wanna see the tag?
Well, we have the.
It's not in this report.
Is that what I'm saying? It's not in this report?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just, they do give complaints, it's all the same.
But, but, no, this report says he didn't find any, uh, he said it was all in, uh.
And I never asked this before, he came in.
Everything was in within the order.
Is the beam on Ed's side and it's?
It's right on Ed's side, right against his driveway, right next to a tree, just like this, so I can't get through. The only fucking tree, when he put a beam right there. And he's still right outside.
And that's, that's what Mike said. He said that the post was on Ed's property, and that he talked to the attorney, and everything was good, and had the power to do that. Is that not what he said?
Yeah, but then also Mike had told me that he told I had to remove it, he had thirty days to remove it, cause he does not have a permit to put beams in. He has a permit to put a berm in, no beams.
No, but he told us that in the planning commission meeting.
I don't care what the attorney said, I don't care what the engineer said, I want something done about it. I understand where you're coming from, Daryl.
No. No, but I'm saying, that's what Mike told.
Yeah, that's what he told you guys, or, yeah.
Last Monday, that he talked to the attorney, and Ed's within his legal right to put that post there, because that's his property. Is that not what he told us?
Okay, so it's alright for me to go put a post out in my yard, then with a big camera up on it?
No, I'm saying, that's what Mike told.
It's respect.
But I'm saying, that's what Mike told us, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page, cause that's what Mike told us.
Well, I'm going to talk with Mike, and I'm going to have a meeting with all of us, so that he can be, you can address your concerns, your complaints with him, and I can be right up to speak.
And you did say that you'd come out on Thursday and look.
Yes, and I will be out Thursday. I don't know exactly what time, cause I have a meeting Thursday morning, but I will be out. Um, and we'll sit down and, and confront each other face to face, I guess, and ask, you know, ask, why, why is this being done, or is it being done?
Okay. So, are you going to pull Ed into this meeting with? Kinda thought you said you were gonna ask him why, okay, so you're talking about Mike, okay. I just wanna make sure I had all the purposes.
But I, I will have a meeting with him.
I wanna know where my letter is though. I think that's against the law.
Yeah, I don't know. I'll have to check on that, cause I don't, I don't know if they keep them long, and who they smell the letters out to, I don't know.
You know, when I called Ron, I asked him about that. He said, I sent you one, I said, no you didn't. You didn't send him one neither, you didn't send Bill one. You didn't send none of us one.
Miss Root either.
Miss Root didn't get one neither.
So just the people in Oakville got them, or?
No, I don't know, nobody did, as far as I can tell.
No, they had to get them, because there was a public hearing, there was, there was a lot of people here.
I wasn't here.
So I know somebody had to get them.
I was here, I didn't.
Larry, Larry, I think Larry got one that built that new house.
I didn't get any letter about it.
Alright, I'll check into that, I, I can't.
I got one when the big solar meeting was, but, nothing about those kind of.
Unfortunately, if he didn't send them registered, there's nothing we can, we can't prove that he sent it.
Unless it's.
Of course, being the clerk, knowing how many of my applications and ballots don't seem to show up to people's houses from the US, United States Postal Service, it could have gotten lost. The odds that both of you got lost are slim, but it could have happened.
That's why now, I'm saying they have to be done by registry mail. That way, we have proof showing that we did send it.
And if they don't accept it, then we have, it comes back and is refused.
You know, and I'm, I'm not gonna sit here and make shit anyway, because I, I don't know what's been going on. Is Mike talking to me? No, I haven't. You know, I, I'll reach out to Mike every now and then or whatever, um, and you brought it to my attention by texting me that there was dust problem, um, so no, I, I, I'm not aware what's going on.
My house is covered. My window sill's got this much dirt in it. I got a one and a half year old baby over there. It's on breathing treatments. And you think I need dust control? He needs a dust control. And he puts a big pile in the middle of that field out there. He's doing that shit just to play games.
Yeah, they're like sixty years old.
Cause he's mad at me. He stole me that. He stole the neighbor guys. He's mad at me, cause I quit on him, I came to the township and said something about my hundred foot. He's the crybaby.
Well, I'll see, you know, I, I'm not gonna promise you nothing, I'm gonna look into it, I'll see what I can find. I will make sure we have this meeting, so that we can all sit down, hash it out, and not have to do it here.
Is Mike gonna be in that meeting?
Mike's gonna be in that meeting.
I think the township needs to get sued.
Yup, Mike's gonna be in that meeting. And you, you guys are more welcome to attend if you'd like.
Absolutely.
You know?
But then that would be.
I mean, we can't have a quarrel, but, yeah.
But, Daryl's on the planning commission, so that doesn't sound.
Yeah, it might just be good that you, if you don't mind.
Depending on when you guys have it.
It's gonna be in the evening, I don't know. What, what days are good for you?
Uh.
Don't get that in the way.
Yeah, every day is good, about that one.
No, that's not true.
Hopefully, your schedule looks nothing like mine, otherwise you won't hit me.
Do you guys, do you mind for wait till after holidays? Is that where my schedule, you do mind or you don't mind?
I mind, I'm just fine.
Are you okay with it?
I'm okay.
Cause that way my schedule will open up more, um.
Just come out Thursday and look.
I, I'm gonna do that. Let's, let's try to look for January. You, you could use, what your meetings are in January, and, um, get Mike and.
Yeah, no.
Alright, anybody else?
We don't need that.
I gotta, I gotta.
Lock your ears.
You might get brulance at meetings.
He said, did you ever get a chance to check out a chair in here?
No.
My back hurts.
I need some chairs like those.
These chairs are old. Oh, you know.
I know, they're old. They're like eighties. Why don't you guys look for new chairs up there too?
So, guys, we're looking at, you want chairs here?
I'll make a motion. You want a new one?
I'll be on.
I'm spending grand money, you want a chair?
I want all these new ones.
Alright, board trustee comments, listen.
Um, just hold on to your. Your little estimates I have?
I got them.
Alright, and then, um, we'll approach, I might actually ask them to come in the next meeting in, in January, so we'll do it that way.
Daryl?
No comments?
Mike?
Um, how's it, or, website comments, hold on, aren't you?
I have, I have to fill out the technical work to get our dot org, or, or we can progress. And that takes six to eight weeks to get it done.
Did you already fill it out?
No. That's why I said I have to fill it out.
Anything else, Mike? Okay. Um, I, the only thing I have is I want to wish all the residents a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I have an open door policy, guys. Anytime you've got complaints, you've got issues, I'm here every Thursday. Feel free to come in, you know, like I said, I can't guarantee what I can do, but I'm here to listen and try to help you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. At nine thirty-five.
Sure, two seconds.
Five more, all favor?
Aye, opposed?
Moving on, and I ain't even got the motion carries yet.
You thought I'd watch yourself at that auction?
Oh, okay.
Six pot, five, four bucks. Was it green?
Green or red?
I'm into red. I grew up on red, and my grandparents. What do you think? Screen character, or the credit card. I got one, Johnny. One Ford, one international. International. Eight firm, my land.
We go. You, you should know him. Did he give it to you? He said, next time we see him, we're gonna go shoot for you.